A following is a production of KeriTV, the town of Keri's government access channel.
I'll recognize Councilmember George for our ceremonial opening.
I would like to first comment on the heels of our first two-day Keri lazy days in history, and maybe our most successful Keri lazy days in history. It was just a wonderful experience, and I'd like to thank all the people that came out and made it just what it was, all the vendors. It was just a tremendous, tremendous time, and our town crier having been there, and just a great experience for lazy days, and wish that we have 40 more successful ones like it was this year. It was a great experience, and it was for all the citizens that came up, they did, they missed a great one. So, let's stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to amend our agenda tonight to include the deliberative and decision phase of the Amberly-Glen subdivision plan case 15 SB 019 that was continued from our September 1 quasi-judicial meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to the second part of our agenda, 2.1, and we're going to recognize the town manager for his update, Ms. Stiegel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First and foremost, I want to remind our citizens to join us for the dedication of the Jack Smith Park Saturday at September 10th at 10:00 a.m. Secondly, I-
I like that.
Yeah. Very special moment, and well-earned. The next item, I want to remind the public that the town has launched a public wireless network, which is available to anyone on campus. It is named TOC underscore public, and once users select the network, they'll be prompted with a login screen where they'll need to agree to the town's terms and conditions upon initial connection every 24 hours. This will make it easier for Councilwoman Bush to play Pokemon Go on campus.
Yes.
We're excited about that. And finally, several media outlets are reporting earlier today that the State Board of Elections has approved the town's request to have Herb Young Community Center as an early voting site for the November elections. Thank you to Ginny for all of her hard work on this, and we'll have information about that on the town's website tomorrow. That's it.
Perfect, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to the Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting. We've included instructions for speaking at the Public Speaks Out on the printed agenda, and if you would like to speak at Public Speaks Out, please take a seat to my right, the seats marked as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments and may speak on any topic as long as it's not a continued hearing or the Amberly-Glen quasi-judicial hearing, and the reason that is is because we can only hear testimony during that part of the hearing, or during that hearing. There's a 30-second, I'll start over, there's a three-minute time limit for speakers, and there's a timer located on the podium. When the green light turns yellow, it means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when your time expires, it'll turn to a flashing red light, and at that moment, I'll interrupt you and ask you to conclude your comments, and I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our three-minute time limit. We also ask that if you're here on behalf of a group, that you have a spokesperson to speak on behalf of all of the group, and that will help reduce repetitive comments. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Brad Allen. I am the President and Executive Director of North Carolina Senior Games, and I'm here to thank you for allowing Senior Game State Finals to return to the town of Keri. One of our largest senior events in our history, 3,260 athletes and artists aged 50 and better, not O-L-D-E-R, but better, will be here in Keri and the surrounding areas very, very soon. I am very fortunate, as Executive Director of our organization, to get to work with Parks and Recreation Directors, their programs, and senior centers across this state, and I must tell you that Doug McCraney and his program here are by far one of the leading programs in this entire state. So, thank you for continuing to give your resources to older persons in this state and your community, and on behalf of Dr. Louise Gooch, our Chair, she would remind you that you don't quit playing because you grow old, that's O-L-D, you grow old when you stop playing. So, thank you so much for allowing us to be here.
Amen to that. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'll invite our next speaker forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. With your indulgence, I am David Lindquist. I live at 109 Belvis to drive in Keri, and I am also here to thank you, but in this case, in support, the generous support you've given for the town's nature education programming and for the sustainability initiatives. I'm really excited at how these programs have grown in recent years. The nature education programs have moved beyond the Stevens Nature Center and are reaching more citizens now at some of our other assets, places like White Oak Greenway and the Hinshaw Greenway in North Keri Park. It's exciting to see how the town has gotten behind the gardening for wildlife with the gardening for wildlife initiative. I understand that nearly 300 households have committed to be a certified household in that program. It was wonderful to see the installation of a demonstration pollinator garden at the Page Walker Arts and History Center this year, and I've been seeing people in my own circles responding to these, taking up the challenge of creating pollinator gardens, or at least gardens for wildlife, adapting the principles of the nature education programs in practical ways to their own homes. I know where off I speak, I am a longtime participant in those programs, a volunteer for some. I've had wonderful results applying these programs' knowledge, informed knowledge, to my own front and backyard. I'm constantly getting compliments on the kinds of things I've installed. I'm attracting the best wildlife in the neighborhood. I'm so glad to see the town is behind these. Thank you for your generous support for these past few years. I'm looking forward to how these programs will evolve into something more and make Keri an even better, more vibrant community as a result. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lindquist. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? We'll close Public Speaks Out. That might be the first time that we've ever had only thank yous at Public Speaks Out. So, thank you.
Record this at his-
We're going to move to the consent agenda. For the benefit of those people watching on TV, we're going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please remember that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes, proposed organizational change in the finance department, adjusting the operating hours of the Citizen Convenience Center during October through March months, Beaver Creek Pump Station granting ownership to Town of Apex mitigation parcel transfer to NCWRC, second interlocal agreement with Town of Apex for the White Oak Creek Greenway American Tobacco Trail segment, conveyance of right-of-way easements to NCDOT across town-owned property for the Marsville Parkway Extension and Interchange U-5315, AMB, ST-1123, ratification of Town Council recommended board commission and Economic Development Committee appointments. Would councilmembers like any of these items pull for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is 6.1, electric vehicle charging station grant application. Ms. Barrett of our staff will present the item, and council may take action. Ms. Barrett.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Tonight before you, staff is asking for your consideration of an electric vehicle charging station grant opportunity. Staff recommends that council approve allowing staff to proceed with a grant application for a competitive grant opportunity from Duke Energy for the amount of $50,000 to request infrastructure and installation costs for 12 public charging stations in four locations. First, the parking deck at the Herb Young Community Center, which also serves Town Hall. Second, the parking deck at the new library/downtown park. Third, a proposed parking deck at a proposed mixed-use development on Chatham Street, and at Bond Park Boathouse. If awarded, the town expenditure for installation software and network costs would be $3,600 for one time, and a yearly $3,100 recurring network cost. If the grants awarded, and the town decides to pay for the power, it is expected to cost less than $5,000 a year. If selected for the grant, staff will return to council to seek approval for acceptance of the award and other budgetary considerations. Just a little background, the last time I was here to speak with you about electric vehicle charging stations was in 2014. We do have five existing public electric vehicle charging ports. At the time we did our last evaluation, we are working on coming back to you, but at our last evaluation, those stations are used 20 to 40 times a month, and the current electrical cost is $14.30 per station per month. We found during our first two years of the pilot that a web-based integrator made for superior ease of administration, and so if these grants, if this grant is awarded, we'll be doing, we'll be using such an integrator. And staff considered having charging stations available at Town Hall to be a key amenity. This is a sentiment that has been expressed by other major technical area employers like Cisco. And another key fact is that the electric vehicle market is expanding. Between 2014 and 2016, the electric vehicles registered in North Carolina grew by 50%. So, staff recommends that council authorize staff to proceed with this competitive grant opportunity for $50,000 in funding from Duke Energy for 12 electric vehicle charging station ports in downtown Keri mostly, and a couple at Bond Park. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Questions for Ms. Barrett, or comments?
I have a question. In the report, it talks about either charging a parking fee or not charging a parking fee. If we were to charge a parking fee, what might that be, and how would we administer that?
So, the picture has gotten a lot rosier in the last couple of years, so when I come back to you in November, I'll be happy to share with you now, but I'll share it with you again, that the web-based integrator is called ChargePoint, and previously, they charged not only a yearly fee, but a percent of the revenue, and it was a bit complicated, and staff ended up not recommending that we charge for power because it would cost more to administer that than we would receive in revenue. Now, ChargePoint offers just a flat 10% fee.
So whatever the amount of electricity they charge, they would charge 10% of that?
They would take 10% of what we, the town, elected to charge for that parking-
But how does the person actually get charged that parks in the space?
Right. The third, the integrator, ChargePoint, is a network, and most EV chargers, EV users are part of that network. And so, once they have an account and they go to a station, they can elect to use their account. So, it's all-
So, it's voluntary?
No. They couldn't use the station unless they use the ChargePoint.
Okay, okay.
So, when I go to the one at James Jackson, I have to use my ChargePoint account? Even though it's free for me, I still have to use the ChargePoint account so that it opens it up?
Okay. I'm fine with this, as long as we do charge for the parking space. Basically, what, $5,000 a year in electricity costs, $3,600 one time, $3,100 recurring, so that's eight grand a year right there. The report said there's 4,600 electric vehicles in North Carolina, 30% are in Wake County, which brings that number down to 1,380. I would guess the majority of those are in Raleigh. I just, you know, don't know that I totally want to subsidize a couple few hundred vehicles in Keri without them having a little bit of skin in the game. So, if we elect to charge a fee based on what I've heard, then I'm okay with it. If not, then I would probably vote against this.
And we're going to get another bite of this, right? What you're asking to do is just apply.
A few more bites. So, you'll have one more bite about the existing five coming in November, and then another bite when Duke awards our grant. I'm being optimistic there. But it is competitive, but we feel we have a strong application.
Other comments, questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the recommendation identified by staff.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Thank you, council.
We now move to item 6.2, council-initiated item regarding aesthetics of medians per council's operation procedure. The council as a whole may take one of the following actions: discuss the issue and take action at the meeting if no information is required from staff, and if council does not seek public input, or refer their request to a future council meeting, at which time a staff report with staff, a staff recommendation will be prepared, or decide not to pursue the council-initiated request. Ms. Robinson made this request, and I seconded it, so I will recognize Ms. Robinson.
Okay. So, a while back, a change occurred at Town Hall where we said if a median is fewer than six feet across, then it doesn't need to be planted, instead it can be concrete. And we've seen now what that's starting to look like. There's an example of it kind of over on Maynard near Killdeer Farm, and there's actually instances all over the place popping up. And when I drive by those, I think, you know, I think we were better off having some of those smaller medians, thinner medians planted. A good example would be on Maynard in front of the Kroger Shopping Center, where you have the day lilies in the median there, it's fewer than six feet, but it has the day lilies, it looks nice, pretty much, I think, all year round. So, I would like for the council to direct staff to give us the pros and cons of going back to having medians planted that are fewer than six feet, and so that we can understand. I think it was predominantly ease of maintenance, why they went with the six feet, it might be safety as well, but I'd like to weigh those against kind of the aesthetic impact that it's had going to the fewer than six feet.
Thank you. The only thing I would ask is, to follow up, is to gather information about more or less than six feet, you know, two feet, three feet, four feet, whatever, provide that kind of information to help us make a decision, maybe. And just one last comment, I strongly believe that one of the best aesthetic amenities that we have is our medians. It sets us apart from many communities, and I would hate to lose that characteristic.
I agree.
Other comments on this?
I would just add that maybe while we're considering landscape medians, that maybe also to be considered would be decorative treatments, maybe like a brick look or something along those lines. If we find out that certain widths of medians are too skinny to plant, and maybe unsafe for people to maintain and mow them, or whatever, that maybe we look at an aesthetic treatment instead.
I think, I think we, I should have reviewed the whole ordinance before I came here tonight, so I apologize, but I think we do have some options for decorative, decorative concrete instead of monolithic, but yeah, getting greater understanding. I mean, I think there is a width where it really isn't practical to plant it anymore, but that, you know, is it really six feet, or could it be three feet, or whatever, you know, and then in which case, do we want something aesthetic there, or do we want it to be monolithic concrete?
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
And then do we direct as well to come back, when they say pros and cons, that would include costs, right?
Yes. Definitely.
And the implications of it.
I mean, if it's, you know, financially not practical, we certainly don't want to do it. Want to preserve as much as possible. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we direct staff to produce a report for us on the aesthetics of medians that are six feet and more narrow.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Discussion.
Yeah, the only thing, I think what we do well in this town is that we do just what you're asking, that we periodically look at the consequences of our decisions, be they unintended or not. I mean, I recall that a lot of this was directed between, around the balance between cost and so forth. So, I think it's healthy to go back and look and just see what those results are.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I'll just ask Mr. Stiegel if he's clear on the direction.
Very.
Okay, very good.
Crystal.
Before we move to our next item, we're going to take a five-minute break to reset the table.[1307.28]
Joining communities, but all the extra time and effort, the roundabouts, I think, will ease a lot of the concerns of the neighbors of using this avenue as a cut through. And I, and I hope that the developer will take into consideration how important this neighboring community is, as all communities are to us.
Other comments?
Go ahead.
There you go.
I guess on the, I know, I do appreciate the second, the second traffic circle, I think I mentioned before, because I think that to me, I didn't want it to be just to, to stop people from going into the, between the old and the new, it's like a delineation. I wanted it to, I felt like the whole street needed to be slowed because it's important for people not to cut through. I appreciate that. As far as what's handled at the site plan, I understand that developments that have signs, usually have an edit at the entrance. And I know that site plan is maybe where this is handled, and that's what I need to find out for sure, if it's handled at the site plan. Where, where, where is someone going to know, coming from the west, that they're entering into a different neighborhood, rather than just hitting two traffic circles?
We can ask staff, but in my opinion, I think the neighborhood probably has an option of whether or not to produce a sign. I don't think they're required to produce a sign.
You were referring to the connection between the existing Wecroft neighborhood and Amberly Glen?
Right.
There's no requirement, but the Amberly Glen development could choose to put signage of some sort as you enter their development.
Either, either or, both could, could sign, sign as they go on the other, and that could be handled at the site plan if they wanted it.
At the site plan, well, coming in for a sign application can occur at any time.
That's the way, that's the way.
Ms. Robinson?
Yeah, I appreciate that the additional open spaces or place space, recreation space has been added, and that it was divided into two, so it's dispersed throughout the community. I think that's positive. I would like to vote for this, but I have learned that when I vote for projects that really I still don't like, I end up having guilt every time I go by them. So, I'm going to vote against this for the reasons that I stated at the last council meeting. I think that there's, this is still too dense, and it doesn't make a gentle enough transition to the subdivision to the east. So, I'll be voting against it.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve with several amendments added. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed.
No.
Motion carries six to one. Ms. Silverstein, is everything in order?
I believe you need to close the hearing.
That's, that was after I was going to ask you.
I think it is, so why don't you close?
All right, very good. So, at this time, I'll close the public hearing, and that'll be the end of this matter. And I would entertain a motion to go into closed session, Ms. Bush.
Okay. Pursuant to GS 143 318, 11A and 3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and are retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is being privileged or confidential by GS 143 318 10.
Second motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, we are in closed session.